...Commission, I'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here, please make sure that your cellphones are turned off. The Commission's first going to meet as a Board of Adjustments to consider Item 1, which is a request for a variance, and after Item 1, the Board will reconvene as the Planning Commission to address the consent agenda and the regular agenda. Action taken on any variance may be appealed to the cert. Court in a manner and a form as provided in the statutes of the state of Dakota. At this time, I call the order of the meeting of the Board of Adjustments. Is there a report here from staff on Item Number 1?
Good evening Commissioners, David Heinold, Planner 1, Minnehaha County Planning. The petitioner applied for variance to reduce the side yard setback from seven feet to one foot. As you can see in this map right here, the subject property is located just west of Renner Ball Diamond, if you will. Petitioner's requesting a variance from the side yard setback requirements to allow a larger deck, a larger open area north of the Renner Monarch baseball field and west of the Monarch Steakhouse building. The entry of the deck would be 12 feet wide and two feet off the ground, and the second level of the deck would be 12 feet wide and four feet off the ground. The requested variance allows the maximum use of the 25-foot lot, as you can see in the map right there, and provides a two-level deck, which is necessary to view the entire baseball field over the top of the east dugout. The zoning Board of Adjustment shall not vary the regulations unless it shall make findings based upon the evidence presented to it in each specific case that all of the following conditions are present. Not all situations or events can be covered by a zoning ordinance, and thus a mechanism is put into place in which the public can seek a variation to the regulations. In this situation, the specific circumstance of the requested variance is unique to the property, directly adjacent to the Renner Monarch baseball field, and would support the granting of a variance. The requested variance will not have a negative impact on property values in the immediate area, only a positive benefit for surrounding land uses. The requested variance should provide a huge improvement for the entire area, therefore no detrimental impact on the area in property, and this will be caused by the variance. The granting of a variance does not harm the public interest and would be in harmony with the general purpose of the zoning ordinance. The subject property has been developed in a way, as you can see on the map right there, there's a couple images right here as far as where the proposed deck would be, and basically this is right along the lot line. The subject property has been developed in a way that would not allow reasonable use of the property without the granting of a variance. The adjacent properties to the east, Mappleton Township's Renner Monarch baseball field will receive many benefits from the approval of the requested variance. So staff recommends approval of variance 14-01 to reduce the side yard setback from seven feet to one foot on the property legally described as tract 3, Mappleton addition, section 16, Township 102 North, range 49 West. And with that, do you have any questions?
Questions for staff? Thank you. Is the applicant here who'd like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Anne Evangelistow. I own the Monarch in Renner and have for quite some time, and I'm requesting a variance so that I can put a very nice deck, a two-level deck, on the west side of my building. And as you can see from the one picture, the area looks a bit neglected, and it has been for a number of years. And the people that are working on and with the ball field and myself are going to work together to develop this so that we are doing landscaping. I'm going to do a very nice deck, hopefully, with the granting of the variance, and they'll landscape, I'll landscape, and what you see there today will not be what it'll look like by the time we get to the end of the season. So it's an area that needs attention, and that's what we hope to do. I can address any questions that you might have.
Are you planning on watching the games from there? Are there going to be bleachers or anything like that?
Not in the deck. The deck will have seating, but initially it was going to be a one-level deck, and then as we got to looking at it, we realized that the east dugout was too high. It blocks out almost the entire infield from that level, so that necessitated getting a ladder out and determining where we needed to be to see over that east dugout. And so we will be able to view the games from there, but there will be just seating, but not, you know, not bleachers or anything such as that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How many of the games played at the Renner Field are required admission fee?
I believe, I believe all of them. I believe they have a gate for all of them. There may be a few that are just kind of make-up games or whatever, but the Legion program is very large, and then the Renner Monarchs themselves will play around 15 games on the field. The balance of the 110 or so games on the field would be played by the Legion teams. And they, they not only play spring and summer, they have a fall league as well, so that field will be used a lot. And we'll work together to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to ascertain that gate. We don't know the answer yet, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah?
Another question? Do you have a limit on how many people would be allowed on the deck?
I'm sure there'll have to be a limit. I don't know what the guidelines are by the county, by square foot or anything, but I'm sure as we, as we apply for that building permit and so on, that that'll all be relative to that.
Any other questions from the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this matter? Okay, Commissioner.
I do have a question, it's probably for staff. So does that usually, the number of people that would be allowed on the deck for safety purposes, would that be established here, or is that part of the actual building permit process? I guess maybe someone else on the board knows where that part would go.
Be more for building code regulation in terms of what the safety is, what the deck's designed to support. Who else have any thoughts?
I'll move approval of the variance.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further conversation, discussion? Call for question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Then we'd like to have a motion to adjourn as the Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Planning Commission.
It's my motion.
Seven.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so we reconvene as the Planning Commission, so a couple of additional comments. Any final action taken tonight on conditional use permits will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal to the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Tuesday, May 5th at 5:00 P.M. In the event of an appeal, a decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing. That'd be on Monday, May 20th at 9:15 in the same room. Any final action taken tonight on a rezoning application tonight will be referred, if referred, it will be referred to the County Commission for a public hearing on Tuesday, May 27th at or after 9:15. The meetings of the County Commissioner also held in the same room. And at this time, I'd ask the Commissioners if there's any objections to items on the consent agenda. On hearing any, then I will read the items on the consent agenda, and if there's anyone from the audience that would like to have the item moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, please raise your hand, and then we'll move to the regular agenda at this time. So Item Number 2, first of all, Item Number 1 is the approval of minutes at the last meeting. Item Number 2 is a conditional use permit 14-17 to exceed 1,200 square feet for an accessory building that are requesting 1,800 square feet. And the property is 46474 Country Lane, and that's approximately four miles west of Sioux Falls. Item Number 3 is a conditional use permit 14-18 to exceed 1,200 square feet and requesting 2,772, and this one's located at 4710 Chestnut Street, and that's approximately three and a half miles west of Sioux Falls. Item Number 4 is a conditional use permit 14-19, also to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory, and they're requesting 2,592 square feet, and this property is 26486 Burns Place, and that's approximately four miles west of Sioux Falls. Item Number 5 is a conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square feet, requesting 2352, and this is at 46269 Park Place, and that's east shore of Wall Lake. Anyone here for that item? Want to move to the regular agenda? Dwayne?
I would like to speak to that.
Okay, we'll move the Item Number 5 to the regular agenda. Item Number 6 then is a conditional use permit 14-21 to allow an indoor/outdoor equipment storage on the property that is located at the northwest corner of the Crooks-Renner exit in Interstate 29. And Item Number 7 is a rezoning 14-04 to rezone from A1 Air Cultural District to C Commercial District on the property, which is 25404 475th Avenue, and that's approximately four miles south of Baltic. Okay, then we need a motion to approve the regular agenda with, which would now include Item 5 and Item 8, and Item 5 being moved off the consent agenda. Oh, excuse me, I guess we should approve the consent agenda first before we move it. So the, the items on the consent agenda then are the minutes, Items 2, 3, 4, not 5, 6 and 7. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. Is there any further conversation? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. So now we move on to Item 5 on the regular agenda. David, do you have a report on that?
Should we move the regular agenda automatic?
You're so good at this. Well, you should do this. So let's, let's move the regular agenda, which is now Items 5 and 8.
It's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, okay. We're on to a regular agenda, David, Item Number 5.
David Heinold, Planning and Zoning Department. Conditional use permit 14-20 is to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building areas, 2,052 square feet. Petitioner is requesting to construct a 42-foot by 56-foot detached accessory structure for personal storage of boats and automobiles. Subject property is located at the east, or the west end of Park Place, just on the east shore of Wall Lake. Accessory buildings shall not occupy more than 30% of the rear yard, subject to the following limitations. In the A1 and RC districts, the total accessory buildings, total area of accessory buildings shall not exceed 1,200 square feet when such buildings are located in a subdivision of more than four lots, unless a conditional use permit has been approved. The proposed building will have 10-foot, will have a 10-foot overhead door with 12 to 13-foot side doors. The building will be located on a roughly half-acre, half-acre parcel northwest and immediately adjacent to the petitioner's property. As you can see right here, the, the yellow square right there is the location of the 42 by 56-foot building. Mr. Fiat plans to remove an existing two-stall garage that is currently on this parcel of land to replace with a proposed structure. Just in the general area, there are a few accessory buildings on similar lot compositions in comparison to the subject property with the proposed size is. In 1991, the property at 26566 East Shore Place built a 2,560-square-foot accessory structure. The property owner north of this lot constructed a 2,400-square-foot accessory structure on a similar-sized lot. In 2002, the property owner at 46274 Park Place applied for conditional use permit 02-64, and was approved to allow 2,248 square feet of total accessory building area, however only 2,032 of the total accessory structure, square footage, has been constructed in the lot, and that's located just to the east of the petitioner's property, shown on the map. There are similar accessory building sizes in the area. In the immediate area, the total accessory building area up to 2,560 square feet, the petitioner will only be using a proposed structure for personal storage of boats and automobiles, not for commercial use or any business activities. Thus, thus the requested building size should not significantly affect residential properties or property values in the immediate area. The accessory building may only be used for residential purposes. No commercial or business activities are allowed at any time. Given the size of the other larger accessory structures in the immediate vicinity of the subject property, a 2,352-square-foot accessory structure would be congruent with the land composition. Access will be, will be provided via a new driveway off of Park Place via extension north. No further utilities will be needed to be provided. There will be no off-street parking as a result of residential activities with the proposed structure or any commercial or business property. Business parking will be allowed at any time. There will, no offensive nuisance, no offensive nuisances shall be permitted at any time during the use of the proposed accessory structure. The use of, all use, the use of lighting should be directed downward onto the property in order to prevent light pollution off-site. So staff finds that the proposed accessory building size would be relatively comparable with the size of the existing residential accessory structures in the area. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 14-20 with the following conditions: the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed 2,352 square feet. The accessory building should not exceed 35 feet in height. That a building inspection is required to determine that the building does not exceed 2,352 square feet measured from the outside perimeter. That the existing garden shed, a garage, shall be removed from the property prior to the construction of the proposed accessory building. That the building shall be an accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot. That only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building, and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed at any time. That all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded, designed to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries, and that a building permit is required prior to the construction of the accessory building. And that the Planning and Zoning Department reserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory building at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with these conditions of approval listed with the conditional use permit and the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. So without any entertaining questions.
Questions for staff? Thank you, David. And if I were to follow up my quick notes, I would've told those folks that were here for the consent agenda that their items were approved and could leave if they'd like to. But you're also welcome to stick around for the fun, too. All right, is the petitioner here for Item 5? This for conditional use request? Come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Lasfire.
Any comments about the application or the staff report?
No, we purchased this property in '08, and we currently live on Hickridge in Harrisburg. And we just, due to the recession, or recession in the climate, we had put off building a house there. Recently tore down the existing home and are putting up a new home, and we would also like to put up this building that was mentioned by David. I have a tractor, a curvent, a boat, and a couple of tires, and that's what this building will be used for.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Boyce. My wife Lois and I live at 26575 East Shore Place. First of all, beautiful improvements that you're doing to the property last, a very nice house going up, and one of those buildings that is a similar type just up is mine, so I appreciate the need for a decent-sized building. That isn't what I'm speaking to tonight. I think it's very commendable what he's doing, adding to our property out there. The problem that I see with that property is that if you could go back to the one slide where it shows the nice yellow, there, you see that East Shore Place comes down and stops on the one side of this property, and Park Place comes in and stops at the other property, at the other corner of the property, which makes a bottleneck. So if, if at our property or anything, we want to bring in a trailer to haul anything into the property, one has to back all the way back out around because you can't go through there. That's blocked off. I, I can see why somebody doesn't want a road through their property, however, there's at least four properties just up the road that have the right-of-way going through their property. The, the case where it would be extremely important, I believe, is in, in snowfall. If, if one of the routes is blocked, if you couldn't get out on East Shore Place that you would be able to get out the other way, you'd have an alternative. Another important issue is emergencies. If there's an emergency and then, you know, two emergencies in that area, one has the road blocked, it would be very good to be able to get in from the other direction. So I, I don't know if this is the proper place to address that, but I believe that needs to be looked at for public safety issues. And again, I, I understand, you know, I'd like to have no road past my property, too, but as being part of a neighbor and, you know, being neighborly in a neighborhood, I realize that's essential to have access for other people. So I would just ask that that be considered by the county, that, that we take a look at, at why that isn't opened up, all the rest of it is.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Boyce, just, is your home and your property visible on this map here, or is it just off of it?
It's just off that, it's...
To the, like, to the left and up?
Yeah, it's...
It's in the, is it one of the yellow squares there?
Well, the, my outbuilding, I've got two properties out there. I've got a property down with the outbuilding, and then I've got a house that's located... So one right there, oh, that's the outbuilding right there, right there that you're looking down.
So it's just below that, that you...
Yeah, but, but our house is, is back up around that, that property isn't affected at all because we go right out there, but the house is right there with the one with the dock.
And so those narrow drives are, although they're used for two-direction traffic, it's pretty, pretty tight.
You have to, you have to, we have to pull over a little to get through there. You, you can't just come right through there.
I happen to know it very well because I have a couple of houses on the end of the East Shore Place, and so I've got people turning around at my grass, people that are just coming out to do the looking-loo thing, and it is a problem. However, staff, I'm not sure that it's within our authority to really address this issue, but possibly. Commissioner Barf is making notes. Yeah. I'm doodling. Doodle all you want.
Yeah, it's just interesting that that wasn't opened up when it was...
I believe at one time there was an easement across there, but it's been vacated or what, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there, the school buses used to go through there. I know Millie just told me that they used to get picked up by the school bus and it went through there, so there was normally a passage through there.
So did people just plant trees across with them? They got chained for a while, enclosed, and I, you know, neighbor that didn't want to raise, make a fuss, I don't know, I think it just happened, and over, over a time it didn't be used, and now it's seeded and somebody's alive. So I'm not sure whether there's really legal easement there or not. Is that something staff could follow up on? Yeah, can look into it. That'd be great.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, you know, on those types of deals, you could potentially have a fire engine get in there and not be able to get out, and, you know, any of that kind of problem.
Turning around would be extremely difficult. I mean, you certainly wouldn't do it on the right way, you'd be on people's property in an emergency.
We'd do it anyway.
I'm not sure with all the looking-loo's up your ass, but...
Well, Mr. Chairman, seeing that this issue probably really isn't pertinent to the actual building, I would move to approve, according to staff's recommendations with all the conditional use permit, the building size.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I just want to check, see if there's anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak to this item? Okay, Commissioners, any further discussion? I got a motion to approve with the recommended stipulations from staff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, all those. Motion carries. Your initial use request is approved.
He said, hopefully can look into that.
Yeah.
Maybe the register being someplace has, if there is a, if it's been vacated or not vacated, or if there's an easement, and that would be the place to look.
Yep. Would you guys mind me of that, please? Okay, Item Number 8, it's a conditional use permit to allow bulk fuel storage at 46339 Jeffrey Street. It's a half-mile south of Hartford. David, you're filling in for Scott, I take it?
Filling in.
You're getting the short straw out here.
David Heinold, Planning Department. Conditional use permit 14-04 is a deferral from the January 27th meeting. It's a deferral to allow bulk fuel storage on the property legally described as basically Lot 1, Brower's Edition, Brower's second addition, so it's called Section 27. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow bulk storage and distribution of fuel. So you can see with this site plan, this is the indicated site plan that was submitted from the last Planning Commission meeting. The applicant has partially constructed this site without prior Planning Commission approval or without securing building, proper, the link permits. A site inspection on January 13th found that all five proposed tanks have been constructed. Tank number one is 12,000 gallons and will contain diesel. Tank number two is 6,000 gallons and will contain diesel number one. Tank number three is 6,000 gallons and will contain gasoline. Tank number four is 12,000 gallons and will contain diesel number two. Tank number five is 12,000 gallons and will contain clear diesel. Site plan also shows a 18-foot by 75-foot loading dock located on the west side of the tanks. As you can see on the site plan, it's indicated there, this portion of the facility had not been constructed. The site plan is indicating that any security fence will be installed on the site. There's also, according to the site plan, there's no screening, landscaping, security fencing, or lighting, or anything of that nature. There's no indication of where the driveways are or where the trucks will turn around in the, in the location of where the natural flow, where trucks will be entering and exiting the property. There is a letter from the State Fire Marshal's Office indicating that they have reviewed the plans, reviewed and approved the plans, and provided the approval to the Hartford Fire Rescue and Self-Plated Department of Environmental and Natural Resources. The Minnehaha County Office of Emergency Management reviewed the conditional use permit application and did not have any comments on the proposed use, but if approved, staff typically require the applicant to register the types and amounts of materials stored on the site with the Emergency Management Office. The area, Brower's Edition, consists of mainly industrial and commercial businesses. The site to the east is the location of a portable toilet and sanitation business. Property to the west of the location is a commercial business that works with highway resurfacing. And the area to the south is agricultural lands, and the area to the north is a balance of the Brower addition and many businesses, such as storage units and the like. Staff has continued to receive any complaints over the past 10 years on the condition of the... of subdivision roads, especially Jeffrey Street, which we've continued to discuss last planning commission meeting, as you might recall, um, and also the roads located within the Brower Edition. Jeffrey Street is gravel road for the first one thousand feet. As you can see in these pictures right here, the location of Jeffrey Street, um, until you get to four sixty-third. There have been maintenance issues with regard to the subdivision roads within the development. And now that the applicant's request for bulk fuel storage will place additional heavy truck traffic onto, onto the roads that will continue to cause problems down the road if the issue is not addressed. So staff has serious concerns that the current road system is not capable of handling additional heavy truck traffic and that the additional truck traffic will cause additional damage to the roads during the spring wet periods, pre-staw. Additional truck traffic will also lead to more dust, dust issues if it's not addressed with any kind of dust control measures. On January fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the city of Hartford reviewed this development request. The Hartford City Planning Commission expressed concerns over the existing roadway. They also noted that the roads in the Brower Edition are, are gravel. Spring thawing often leads to frost boils in very soft road conditions. They wondered how additional heavy truck traffic would damage the roads. There are other concerns focused on safeties, safety issues such as traffic safety at the intersection of County Highway, Jeffrey Street, and the Interstate ninety interchange. And they wondered if any measures would be required for spill containment. So a lot of what, what's been said, especially with the staff report, has been said at the last planning commission meeting. So, um, really staff recommends denial of conditional use permit fourteen dash zero four to allow bulk fuel storage facility based on the condition of what's already out there in the Brower Edition and the issues that need to be addressed in order to move forward with any conditional use permit requests. So with that, answering, answering the questions.
David, I have one, just, I guess, somewhat of a rhetorical question, but, uh, this is a conditional use because it's a bulk fuel storage. This is a, uh, a property that, uh, could be used for a variety of other things without coming before the commission, right?
Yes.
And the fact that it's, it is bulk fuel storage, which, um, the reason, I'm going to guess that that's a conditional use because it, it can be perceived as posing a hazard and increased truck traffic and those things, and that's precisely what I would hear, I would assume. Is that fair to say?
Posing the limitations on what's already out there.
Yep, right. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You know, the last meeting, there were people here concerned about the road conditions. Did they ever come together and try to fix that?
Well, I, I think there's been a couple of things, but I don't think the issue's really been a hundred percent addressed to the point where, where we can move forward, but just allowing the use as, as it stands right now.
Other questions for Stan? Is the applicant here and would like to speak to this item?
My name's Monty Schrader. I'm the general manager of the Hartford Elevator.
Any, uh, do you care to comment on Stan's report? Any recommendation to deny?
I mean, the road gets heavy truck traffic every day. I don't see one or two trucks a day more would change it. For the amount of fuel that we deliver, I would guess at the very most, uh, semis in there would be five to seven a month and little single axle truck that we, we use to haul it out, maybe twenty trips a month at the very most. And I just, I mean, as far as, if you look in the one, there's a semi salvage place, uh, right there off of Brower Circle and Jeffrey Street. There's semis going in there all the time. The porta potty has, right next to that property, has semi that brings in the fluid that goes into the porta potty there in there. I mean, there's truck traffic there already. And I don't see how very few trucks that we would pull in there would make things any different.
Questions for the applicant?
Monty, uh, so, did you have some meetings about trying to fix up the roads?
We talked to various people out there, um, looked at some things that could be fixed out there. The biggest thing on Jeffrey Street is there's no ditches on the south side. There's no, I mean, and there's no culverts that drain the north side of the road to the south side of the road until you get back closer to the second edition. For the first, I don't know how far it is, but from the county highway there to Brower Circle, there is not one culvert that drains north to south.
Is the culvert on the county highway, is that operating?
There is no culvert on that.
So there's no county, there's no culvert there? Would that make a difference?
I don't think so because if you, I, I mean, just by looking at the lay of the land there, I would say the lowest point of that property in between Brower Circle and the county highway is about halfway in the middle. So I thi- I mean, that's the lowest point there. So I mean, if you were going to put a culvert in, you'd have to put it in there.
Everything drops off to the south. How come, uh, how come there's no culverts there that-
I was told that one time before I was, uh, even interested in that out there, there was a culvert there at one time and the frost pushed it out of the ground during the spring and it got dug out of the way and never replaced.
Other questions for them? I've got a couple. I understand that your, we don't have a site plan that shows any screening or landscaping. Can you talk to about your intentions there?
We will, I mean, there's fences on the east and west side of that property and we will put a fence on the north side. The adjacent landowners have fences along there and we would put a fence on the north side for security purposes because our insurance company requires that, so.
Any intentions for landscaping or anything?
Uh, there's trees on the west side of it. We intend to leave them trees there. As far as landscaping, it would just be a gravel lot. I mean, we'll concrete the approaches in and out of it. They'll, for the loading and unloading pad, that'll be concrete toward the road.
Can you remind me again how it is that you ended up with storage tanks there prior to getting a permit?
Uh, we, the company that we ordered them from had to deliver them. They couldn't hold them for us, so we brought them in and set them there. They're not where they need to be. They still need to come back out and set them properly. They're just sitting inside that containment until, so they wouldn't blow around in the wind and they just wanted them off the ground, so.
And one more, I guess. I seem to recall that there's a road district, but it, it may be only for a portion of this area.
I know there's a road district out there and I did, uh, I believe the gentleman here who is part of the road district is here, so.
Okay. Any other questions, ma'am? Go ahead.
As long as you mention the site plan, driveways, where, I think we talked about it last time, but they aren't on the site plan.
The driveways are going to be from where the, the tanks sit, there'll be one on the east and one on the west. They'll make a horseshoe going in on the east, coming out on the west side of the plan.
Yeah, we'll go around. This will be their loading pad.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this item? Anyone else for item number eight? Is there?
Matt Maris. I, um, own property in the development also and, and I was actually the, I guess, elected president of the, of the Road Association and I own property in the second edition, which is the road district. There are two separate entities out there that, are two separate entities that govern the road. We did do a, we did do a improvement project out there four years ago, um, which turned into lawsuits by, against, from other members who, you know, either, for whatever reason, you know, felt that the road wasn't being maintained, it wasn't being done right. So, you know, we've been in a four-year, um, lawsuit over those issues. The least, or the latest of which, uh, we had, uh, our, our attorney argued before a judge against the township, the township, for the township to maintain it. Uh, the judge ruled that that, the township is a necessary party to the lawsuit and at this time, the, the lawsuits are moving forward, but we have no, you know, we don't have an, an outcome to them. So there are things happening for it. I mean, it's not that, there's nothing being done, it's just that, you know, the wheels turn slowly, as some of you can imagine, but, uh, you know, we do have, I think we've got light at the end of the tunnel for it, but.
So Brower's second edition is the road district you're referring to that is in front of this person's property?
The first, the first edition is governed by a road association.
It's different?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
But the road, Jeffrey Road going all the way from, uh, the county highway to the applicant's property, uh, has not been upgraded, right?
There's been, it's been, we hauled in gravel or hauled in crushed concrete and put over top of the road base that was there, um, four years ago. And there's virtually been no maintenance done on it because, you know, our, our hands are tied, we can't really put any more money into it. We're already in a lawsuit. You know, we don't know what the outcome of it is. It's not, you know, we have done, I mean, very minimal, I think a bladesman up and down it twice in the last four years.
Mr. Chairman, our last hearing on this, people were talking about, uh, you know, dragging, uh, chunks of iron and stuff themselves to try to level it out because it was so, in such crummy shape. You know, it's, it's hard for me to see how adding additional traffic will reduce the complaints that we're getting.
Well, I, you know, I wish I could tell you that our lawsuit was done and we've got a, we've got a clear, you know, a clear path on, I mean, the road is going to be maintained, it's just a question of who's going to do it, who's going to pay for it. You know, currently, you know, as I stated, the township has said, no, they will not. The association's logged down and lawsuits with members out there and, uh, you know, we're just, we're waiting. We know, we know where the problems are, we know what they are, and there's nothing new that's come out. Uh, we're, we're just waiting for outcomes of lawsuits so we can move forward with it. But to hold up, you know, another business coming in, I mean, if that's going to be the standard, then maybe some of the businesses that are in there that are running trucks over the road, you know, maybe conditional use on their behalf should be looked at. If we're going to single out one business and one property owner and maybe there's other truck traffic out there that should be looked at also, then in fairness to all property owners. And it's not fair to say that one guy gets to drive his trucks over the road and because he's new out there, he still owns property. But the next guy that was there gets to. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't deem that as a fair use of the public road. And I understand your condition, but-
It's, it's a private road, isn't it?
Well, it's a private road, but it's a public right-of-way. I mean, any, any person out there can drive on that. It's, it is public right-of-way.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this item?
Hi, my name's Mike Colkin. I'm one of the property owners in the bad addition. We're right at the intersection as you come off the highway into, uh, the park. We're on the corner of Jeffrey and Brower, all the way up to the highway that's out front. I don't think this is the place to discuss the lawsuit or anything, but there are other questions that center around that lawsuit. I think last time I was here, I explained part of the work that was done, was done without really any engineering work or anything. It was a temporary fix that's worse now than what it was. There's been gravel and rock hauled in by the property owners in our addition to fix that intersection, especially where you come off the highway. You bring up a good point, Jeff, there's, there's no culvert there. That water does pool in our front park and that water does make that drive, that road disintegrate. And you can go by and look at it, the road is wide there because it gets so soft, they start going over on Clean Solutions property to get around it. No wifans or buds bother. That water comes off the interstate and it sits right there, there's no place to go. There was a question about the one culvert that heaved, that's at the intersection of Brower Circle and Jeffrey. And that did heave. And I sort of mentioned at the last meeting, the township came in and actually fixed some sinkholes on Brower Circle. And that, that culvert came up and the reason it came up was the property to the north of our property, we own, we, we own the body shop business and we formerly owned the big buildings before the antique mall. We sold that a few, few years ago to Kline or K Fire. All the dirt was removed to the north of our property, which lowered that with no drainage off the interstate. Everything that came cooled in at that end. And it never, there was never any grade to get it back to where the culvert was. Consequently, that water sat there and of course the road disintegrated. That did heave finally. It was pulled out and we went one whole year without any culvert there. And our property became a lake all the way to the north because there was no place for water to go, which further saturated everything. When they came in and they did this, uh, temporary fix, uh, they dug down our ditches anywhere from an extra foot to a foot and a half at one point on the opposite side, almost two feet, to try and drain that property that was initially part of that grade. So without any grade there, that water sat, so they came back in, rerouted everything. So our driveways that we had for our business to the north in our impact business, they removed the culverts. At, at our new property, they were brand-new culverts, we got used ones that are like ten foot too long. We replaced them, but everything went down. You can drive out there, there's no landscaping, there's no way to mow it. We used to take great pride in our property. You know, we planted trees, everything else, but we can't even take care of it, we can't even get a mower done. I don't call that a temporary fix. That took care of somebody else's problem up the road. Like I say, don't want to deal with the lawsuit, it is going on. I'm one of those bad guys, but I think I'm right. All the way came here the last time was to support the elevator. We said, we're not against the elevator, we're not against any business coming in. We asked the county for some help and support so we can have an engineering work done on it, so we can get a proper road back in there. That's all we're after. And if it takes using the elevator to get an audience with you, we're going to take advantage of it. There, there's questions about, in fact, the road association and that's the center of the lawsuit, for being a legitimate road association. And that's what everything's based on versus somebody that came in, hired somebody without any engineering work, uh, nothing laid out to the property owners, nothing ahead of time. It was ramrod again in third days and bang, we get a bill with no say-so. I showed up one weekend and our property's all torn up and like, what's going on? So, anyway, there's more to it than that, but we appreciate your support. Like I say, we're not here to deny the elevator or any other business coming in. Like I say, we're not here to deny the elevator or any other business coming in. It's a neat park, it's a neat location, you know, and we want it part of the growth. But, like I say, it was the only way we seemed to get an audience. Thanks.
Anyone else?
About Schulte, I own a property out there. The road presently is barely passable. If more trucks start going down there, your needs reach eat over it. It's totally sinking down into the mud. There's big pumps in there that have no base to support the road. Part of the problem is, some of the businesses out there that bought land were not required to be part of the road association. It was not in their contract or anything. That's what part of the argument is about, that who is supposed to have put in the road? The road has never been put in correctly for the people that bought land before this all started. So the previous owner that sold it should be responsible for putting the road in. To put the road in to begin with, or the road, if you want to call it a road, more of a path, needs to go back and refinish it. Because there is no drainage, water sits there, if we, when it gets to be wet this spring, that road's not even going to be passable with a car, worse than a car, because it's just going to totally sink away. And more trucks down there is just going to make it that much worse. There was talk about not issuing building permits out there until the road is taken care of, until, until there was a road built out there according to specs, so that people that do buy property out there will have access to the property. So continually issuing building permits on property is just a detriment to the road. We wish there'd be no more property, building permits issued until the road is taken care of.
Mr. Schulte, just to be clear then, you're opposed to the approval of this conditional use permit?
Yes, I don't want the conditional use permit approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Schulte. Have there been many building permits issued? Are there, is there other projects under construction now? When was the last one that you can think of that was, that went in out there?
I can't remember the last one that went in, I don't think traffic was that close, but...
I can't remember the last one either.
There are, there are trucks that go in and out of there right now. And if you're out there, you'd be surprised how much traffic there is on that road. That's why the road definitely needs to be improved by the association or the previous owner that started it. The owner that started it is, is where the problem began, because he never, the road was never, ever developed or constructed correctly. And the road isn't actually wide enough for semis to go in and out of their turn, to get into the property. At one time, there was a property owner to the north of us that would drive onto our property and damage our culvert so the water wouldn't drain on our side, and he would never, ever admit doing it or take care of it. I mean, there's semis out there that should be on that road, it's not wide enough or it's not designed for semis to begin with.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Schulte? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item?
I don't know exactly when there was, but there was a building constructed sometime last fall, October, November, to the east of our property out there.
Okay.
In the second addition, I don't know exactly why the building permit was filed for, but it was put up this fall, and I think it's still actually under construction.
And just to be clear, the, the road over in the east side is pretty good, right?
Yeah.
It is better.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Stacy Brower. I operate three businesses out of there in the same area everyone's talking about. I'm open seven days a week, I have plenty of everyday traffic. You know, the development started in, I believe, it was 1978, maybe in the eighties. At that time, you had to have more than five lot owners that all agreed to start the road operation. So this road, Jeffrey, was the first road that was actually out there. And so that road's been existent for a long time, so, but there's been a lot of growth in the last 10 years in that area. A lot of growth in 10 years, there's going to be a lot of traffic. You know, I'm there seven days a week, and most days it's, it's a good road. I have to come in on Jeffrey, you know, operate the antique mall and the tax service. If anyone's out there more than anyone, it's me. And we do see a lot of problem in the, in the spring, and that's when the frost is coming up, but that's everywhere. And with the lawsuit, everything's kind of at hold right now. You know, there was, I don't know how many people exactly, 17 lot owners, and there's, you know, the lawsuit's over three, so, you know, I think after we get past the lawsuit, then, then everyone will have to agree, you know, to get the roads fixed, you know. Everyone wants the roads fixed, but they're not willing to, to pay their share. So, so I think it's going to be a beautiful road once everyone can agree well on it to prosper out there, so. And there's actually been a lot of lots sold out there, so the growth right there, you know, the growth is just going to have to get taken care of too for the new traffic. So it's just all part of growth.
I think you have any questions, Mrs. Brower? Anyone else?
My name is, my name is Jeff Ward Camp, I have some property out there simply for some stories and some recreational use to build a few projects. And I was at the end of that road and never had a problem until the second addition was built, to my knowledge, because me at the end, nobody went beyond my place. And they put in that second addition, I think history will see for itself that it was highly suggested that, that road be constructed and paved before any businesses were stowed back into the new addition. Since that time, there's been about eight properties owners that have put businesses back in there, and they formed a separate association, a road district, which is on the books now, the road association isn't even on the South Dakota statutes anymore as far as I'm, I understand. So they did it right in doing what they did back there, but Jeffrey Street Services, all of those businesses, decides the ones that are existing. So now with the so-called association, that was formed by one person, early on, the owner of that development saw a fit, I think he saw the writing on the wall that he would have to put a road in, so he decided to form a, an association and have it on the books that it existed, but in essence, without any actual meetings, the actual association stipulated that every landowner would pay annual dues and that there would be annual meetings. I've been out there for a little over seven years, there was never once an annual meeting, nor was there an assessment of annual dues. But we do pay county taxes on a regular basis for road maintenance. The city of Hartford did take it upon themselves to maintain that road at one time, they came down there and took care of it, and as such, they are now a party within that legal entity that we're trying to establish. I was also at a meeting down here about five years ago, if not more, where the county basically said either develop a road or we will develop it for you. And I know that was done out in T also, in their industrial park, roads were put in properly and all landowners were assessed over approximately a 10-year period for the lands that, the roads that were put in. What happened in our area was strictly a means by a handful of individuals, and a lot of the people, they say there's only three of us that are contesting and are at, and on a lawsuit, there were many more that paid just because they didn't want the hassle or the burden of going to a lawsuit. So they paid their little bit of money, whatever it may be, it was more for some, less for others. But what we were afraid of from our aspect was, okay, they put the gravel down and everything, and everybody gets an assessment, okay, now when that all goes to hell, because the roads are not surveyed and structured properly, we are now going to have those people that know nothing about road construction hire someone to put in asphalt, and that's going to all go belly up, and then we're going to have to redo it again because the proper engineering and whatnot is not being taken care of. So we decided to draw the line in the sand and say, wait a minute, this is not even a legal entity, it's never been formed properly, to our knowledge. We have some people on our side, some people not on our side. But I do know as a county commissioner, you did address this at one time and highly suggested that that road be surfaced before any second development was put together, and that was never done. I think if you look back at the minutes, I know we have those minutes, you have access to them. So it's just one more business wanting to go in, one more fleet of trucks going down that road without that road being taken care of. And the other thing is, if in fact, the association for some reason does become an entity or would be established as an entity, why in heaven's earth do, say, a dozen businesses have to pay for a road that 40 businesses are going to be using for a stretch of road? That is a main artery in and out of that development, whether it's the second addition or the third addition or whatever it may be, that is the main road. And as a property owner, I just don't think it's right to, to be stuck with the bill that should, the burden should fall on many more hands than what is there. And also, when the commission said, you build it or we will, I'm a dentist, I know nothing about roads. Somebody smarter than me in the engineering field knows how to build a road, so it's not upon me to, to form an association to build a road. It's a county, a township entity, and, and roads are, are that way. I know Brandon is a developer out there, and he didn't put in the sewer systems right, he didn't get the roads right, he had to come in structurally, he was being sued by the city, and, and the developer had to readdress all of the roads in that area before they could go further with development. I don't think it should be the property owners, I think it should be the developer. Thank you.
And before we hear any other testimony, staff, this is a private road, and we're at a commission hearing, land use issues, but I'm a little bit at a loss as to what we could even do here related to this, because we're trying to determine the appropriate use of this property. Suggestions?
Well, that's...
Sorry to put you on the spot. Commissioner Broward?
Well, let me say that during the intervening months here, I have been in touch with the Mayhew County Economic Development Association and with the Hartford Economic Development people. And I guess there have been some, some meetings on that, and I, I just don't see that, apparently there's been no positive result. But you know, even the state, I mean, we spent $100 million on that Northern Beef thing, and you know, that thing, what, why can't we find, you know, $200,000 bucks for this thing? $40 million to move the railroad tracks out of downtown? Give me a break. This is a fabulous location for a commercial and industrial operation in our county. This is a unique spot, south of one of our larger towns and right off the interstate. And why it has to drag on and on as, as an effect of backwater, I, I don't fully understand, and I'm willing to continue to, to work on finding solutions, but to this point, I've not seen any, any progress. Obviously, with lawsuits and people's dander up, things get, get even more difficult, but you know, about a year a township person, you know, townships don't just grab a hold of these private roads and, and do anything with them either. It's, it's a difficult chore, especially when people are not in agreement as to how it should be fixed. I, I do think that I need to get back to my highway department about that culvert right along, right along the county highway, because I did mention it to them before and they've not gotten back to me on it. And then I chewed them out about some other stuff, so maybe they're mad at me. But that needs to be looked at, there needs to be better drainage off that interstate, and I'm disappointed that we haven't made any progress.
You know, from a land use standpoint, obviously putting additional traffic out there is going to be a burden on the already poor situation, but at the same time, it's pretty consistent with other things that have occurred there, so from a land use standpoint, would be for this road issue, and I, our ability to impact that is miniscule, but I mean, well, it's non-existent really as a planning commission. So with that, I guess ask the, the public here if there's any additional comments that are not redundant, meaning they're new comments, I'd like to hear those.
I just think, you know, the Hartford farmer's elevator to, you know, for, for a lot for them is a good thing for the county and also the city of Hartford, to allow them to make use of their lot that they have.
My question is, are there any regulations for developers required to have for a road to go into a development area?
Well, there has to be a coordinated subdivision plan to lay out, depends on the road, the layout.
Was the road laid out correctly when it began?
That I'd have to get back to you on, I'd check it out.
So we're in a development area that doesn't have a road to service it? Because it wasn't done to begin with, according to the county or the zoning laws or whatever there are?
When was, do you, do you have an idea when this was first developed?
Ninety...
In the nineties?
Early nineties, I believe.
Oh, I thought it was older than that.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the regulations have changed on the land.
Yeah, that's why I was going for the...
You take a look at the pound of lions, you know, there is nobody in charge of their streets.
Right.
You know, we all know where it is, et cetera, and it's been a continuing issue for many townships where people couldn't figure out why the township wasn't doing their street, and it's because it was a private drive.
Right.
And we no longer allow residential subdivisions to come into existence without a road district already. And there's a famous story about like an acreage where they wanted to put in eight houses, and they said, well, we're only building two houses, can we just, can we not pave our road? And the commission said, okay, well, eventually, you know, all eight houses were built and they came and said, when the hell are you going to build our road? And, you know, we had let them off originally of not building their road. And this is what, this is the kind of thing that's grandfathered in, that, well, look at the lots north of Wall Lake, I mean, there's like 70 dinky little lots that were put in back in, in the day, and none of those are buildable even.
No.
And yet, that's what the standard was in those days. So this, I think, is an example of what's been handed down to us.
Yeah, perhaps, David, if you could look into, at the time this came into existence, what the requirements were, if they were met, and if not, if there's anything that we could do about it today. I, I believe that, that there probably weren't the standards that you might...
There were the standards that we have today.
I mean?
There weren't the standards that we have today.
Today, right.
Widths, design, engineering.
Right.
There must have been some type of design required for the district.
Not necessarily. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You know, I, I'm a township supervisor for Split Rock, out east of Sioux Falls. We have taken in some new developments from some of the developers, but we have certain requirements that they have to meet. And that being that they have to be 66-foot roadways, there have to be proper ditches, and there has to also be culverts. And we maintain that we do not accept them if they're not. Years passed, I will let you know that we had supervisors out there that were taking in anything. And now, in some of those developments, we have one fine mess. We have no culverts in them, we have no ditches, the roadways are a total disaster out there. And that's because they weren't dealt with properly... And that's because they weren't dealt with properly at the time. And now those of us that are sitting on the board now, we have to contend with them. And it's the people there that live there now. Um, and they have no idea. I mean, I hear it all the time, you know, well, why don't you pave these areas? What they don't understand is I can't just take one subdivision because they're gravel and asphalted when I have 13 or 14 of the developments that don't have that either. I mean, I can't be, show favoritism for just one area. But there are guidelines and that's what should have probably happened a long time ago. But I also understand that sometimes when you form a road district, which some of our developments have tried to do that, that have gravel and that are having poor conditions out there with, mainly because the roads are going to hell, is what they're telling me. And I can't go out there and drive out there with my car, which I won't do. When they form a road district, what happens is over a period of time, each landowner divides up whatever cost to maintain or to asphalt those areas. Folks, that only makes common sense. We live where we live. You know, I tell people all the time, you know, those of us that live in, in the country, we choose to live there. I live on a gravel road on two sides. I have dust all the time. I've never been able to open my windows in 27 years. That's the way I choose to live. I, I think there may be a solution to this, but I don't know what it would be. I mean, I don't disagree that the elevator is probably a prime candidate for that particular area. But with the road the way it is, it's just going to cause more problems for the other people that have businesses there. But somebody's going to have to come together and figure it out.
I'm disappointed that there's not more progress from when we heard this in January. And I do not like holding the elevator hostage. And that's what I feel like is happening. But I like Bonnie, I don't, I don't know the answer. We've got a situation handed down to us from 20 years ago, probably. Because the same guidelines weren't in effect then that are there now.
One last try, any additional testimony, any testimony? Yes, could I speak?
Yes.
Please come forward.
My name is Mike Johnson and I live right to the south of this addition. What I noticed last summer was, uh, the culvert that was there, nobody thought they should clean it out. And then all of a sudden, about the middle of June and July, then all of a sudden the water, because all the water comes from me. But all of a sudden, I see all this water coming down there, so I'm thinking, well, maybe somebody's, uh, water line broke. Well, I drove up there, they just decided then to clean out this culvert. Don't you think people have to try and help themselves a little bit? Instead of asking somebody else to come in and do everything? If, if my culvert is plugged in at my driveway, I get somebody out to clean it out. You know, and when the water sits there that long, it's going to make the roads soft. I guess that's-
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, just a quick question. Uh, living, and you live in the farm place just to the south?
Yes, I do. And I see the semis coming in and out of there and the garbage trucks coming in and out of there. I was going to come and sit at 7:00 in the morning and see how many trucks going back and forth in there in a day, but I didn't have time. I'm getting cans and so, but I mean, it's not like there's one semi coming in there. There's tanker trucks coming in there. There's a truck salvage there that, there's a, uh, reefer truck, that semi that comes in there. I mean, uh, garbage trucks, I don't know how many are back in there. You know, and you know what a tandem truck, garbage truck is, they're not light.
Well, let me just ask you, you know, the, uh, the elevator, you know, believes that they have a safe facility there, but with 48,000 gallons of diesel fuel perched on the hill above your place, does that worry you at all?
No, no, because you look at the other side of the interstate where Coffee Cup is, there's three new apartment buildings back there. And they've got six fuel tanks right behind their station and those tanks are within less than a block of those apartments. I would rather have the tanks where they're at there than I would by the station. I mean, if I live in an apartment there, uh, you know, you never know.
You never know.
But I think it's in a, a good spot for-
Thank you.
Want to close the floor and turn to the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I really don't want to say no to this project, but I don't, I can't say yes as long as this road is in this situation. I, you know, it seems a little nutty, but I wonder if we should defer action again. Tomorrow, the, uh, the Nick Fosheim, the, uh, the head of Minnhaw County Economic Development is speaking to the county commission. And, uh, you know, I, I certainly will bring this up to him and see if there isn't something we can do. And heck, it's an election year for people running for congress, maybe the feds can help us. I mean, the fact is that if this, if this road could be brought up to snuff, and just briefly talking to the highway department, they thought, uh, 10 inches of engineered base with four inches of asphalt would be about right for the type of load that's going on it. It's, it's going to be expensive to fix it up, but if it got fixed up, you know, then another entity like the township, like the city of Hartford, like the county, might be persuaded to take over. No one wants to take over when it's in its worst condition in 60 years. So I, I, what about the idea of, uh, of deferring action again and attempting to get this operable before, before the middle of summer?
I ask the applicant only to speak on that suggestion of the deferral because I'm curious what it might do to his plans.
This road can be fixed very easily. If everybody would let their pocketbooks and egos and leave them at the door and come together and work on it, it could be fixed. Uh, the problem is pocketbooks and egos getting away. I don't think we need four inches of asphalt. We got a gravel road leading to the elevator that gets 400 times more traffic than this road ever gets. It's a great road. Number one, it has maintenance.
What about the question, really, I think the question we're posing to you is what would it do to you from a deferral standpoint, rather than trying to engineer the road here, which I don't think any-
For a deferral?
Yes.
It costs me more money.
Okay.
So would you rather have us say no today then?
If they say no, I go somewhere else. We're not that far from Turner County. We're not that far from McCook County. I mean, I, I go Lake County, I go somewhere else to set up my plan.
Thank you. Chair.
I, I for one, I agreed with this in January that we should do this, allow them, as you mentioned earlier, it's a land use and that's what this planning and zoning commission is. You know, all we hear, the only question with this is the road. It's not whether it's a good spot for it, it's not, you know, it's, it's the land use that that development was meant for. And, uh, I don't see deferring it anymore. I mean, the court case is going to go on, we can't stop that. I just, I think it's time that our hands are tied on what we can do with the road as a, as a planning and zoning commission. I mean, it's got to go higher up, it's got to go to the county commission, to the county highway department, maybe even the, the state because of the interstate, what the drainage coming off the interstate is and those types of things. It's a good spot for this. I don't see, you know, we've got a problem with the road, but that's stuff in the past and, and like, uh, Mr. Schrader said, it's got to be, people got to sit down in that development and, and do it. And it was way back when we started this, Mr. Maris discussed, you know, why are we penalizing one business for the problem that all the businesses have out there? Because this is a good spot for, this is, it's engineered right. You know, they have to engineer it right. The Department of Public Safety says it's engineered right, you know? We're deciding the use of this property for problems that are outside this property. So that's my opinion.
Do we have a motion at all?
With that, I'll move to approve this conditional use permit.
With stipulations?
With the stipulations that are already lined out.
A motion to approve with the stipulations, is there a second?
Go second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion?
I don't plan to support the motion. I do believe that, uh, we won't get fewer complaints, it won't be less of a problem.
Okay. More discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor of approving the conditional use permit with the stipulations, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I believe that's the last item, it's going to be all the new business staff.
I'm going to hire in a business, a building inspector.
Say again, I'm sorry.
You have a building inspector, if anything, you know, read yourself.
Okay.
Everybody get their building done now then.
About the inspection. That's it? Motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second.
All right, twiddle your feet. Let's get the first part screwed up. At least I'm consistent with that.